Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 17th, 2017, meeting of the Dover Area School Board. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Benko, could we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. DeSho.
Here.
Mr. Delater.
Here.
Mr. Eifert.
Here.
Mr. Emmig.
Here.
Mrs. Herman.
Here.
Mrs. Maylie. Mr. Rohauser.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. First up, we have our presentations and celebrations tonight. So, Mrs. Kroom.
Okay. I would like to invite Dr. Weesling up to introduce his live elementary STEM group.
Thank you very much. It's an absolute pleasure to introduce some, three of Live's remarkable teachers who are in attendance tonight. We also have two fantastic students. They're going to talk to you a little bit tonight about their journey that they've embarked on in taking Live Elementary for a three-year journey so far, and we're just getting started. But I have Mr. John Mark Murphy here, who is a fourth-grade science teacher. Mr. Jeff Judy, who is a fifth-grade science and social studies teacher. Mr. Judy Elster, teacher of social studies. And we have our fantastic art teacher, Mrs. Nicole Storms, who, by the way, is responsible for all of the artwork here this week as well, and for students. These individuals have really embraced STEM and what that means to our students and educators this day and age. They've taken a small idea a few years ago and approached me and said, "Can we do this?" And I'm like, "Yes." And then it rolls into something else, and "Can we do this?" "Yes, what do you need?" And it just builds and builds and builds. They're going to put you through one of their activities this evening, so you're not off the book tonight. You're going to be some STEM students tonight. I just kind of had to warn them for that. But not only have they been doing fantastic things to represent Live in the district here, such as the activities that they're exposing our students to, and some of the STEM showdowns that they do, and we invite other people in, but they're actually part of the LIU STEM Leadership Network. And they also had the honor to be asked to participate and present at the LIU STEM Solutions Fair, where they were actually noted and networked and being able to present ideas to visiting school districts and schools, some of the things that they've already started for us at Live Elementary School in the district. So, it's a real honor to introduce them and I'm very proud for them to be representing Live and talk about what we are looking forward to do for STEM. Thank you.
Good evening. As Dr. Weesling said, my name's John Mark Murphy. And we do have a slide presentation. I apologize if we just kind of, I don't know what to say.
Yes.
We're just going to start off by giving a little bit of the history behind our STEM program at Live Elementary. As Dr. Weesling said, about three years ago, we approached him and just said, "All right, we have this time for our students for reading intervention, and that's really important." But the way the cycle works, we had a couple of extra days where our title teachers weren't available, and they were kind of free days for intervention. So, we started off adding some math intervention for our students to meet some needs in areas that were weaknesses. For our students that were already meeting the standards, we said, "Look, can we do some STEM activities during that same time period?" And that's kind of how we began in 2014. It was just with an enrichment model. And as we went through the activities and talked with students and talked with parents, we realized this is something that all of our students would benefit from. So, in 2015, we switched to not just being an enrichment model for students, but something that every fourth-through-sixth grader would be exposed to in our education at Live. And so, we switched to a thematic approach. When we first started off, it was just kind of touching on the areas of STEM. And for those of you who may not know, S is for science, T is for technology, E is for engineering, and then M is for math. And we did a whole year on simple machines. Once a month, our fourth-through-sixth grade students learned a different simple machine. And then, at the end of the year, we started, back in 2014, what we called the STEM Showdown, where students took the lessons that we did during the year and then got to compete against each other, applying it in a little bit of a different way. And so, in 2015, they took all of their simple machines that they learned throughout the year and built something called a Rube Goldberg machine, which had a specific task, and they had to incorporate as many simple machines as they could into that task. Some of our students, the task was to get a spoon to flip a dice. And they could start the machine, but they couldn't touch it after it went. So, if you've ever played the game Mousetrap, it was kind of a bad idea. So, you started, and then it kind of just goes down, and something had to happen. Some of our students actually even took that and made their own challenges and kind of took it to the next level. And then, in last year, what we did was really focus in on the design process and started our students with some computer programming through the organization of code.org. So, that's just kind of a little bit of the history of our approach. I'm going to ask Mrs. Storms to share. If you notice, our presentation tonight isn't just STEM. We, back in, two years ago, morphed it into a STEAM program as well. And I'm going to let Mrs. Storms share a little bit about how the A got into STEAM.
So, at one of those years, at this point, John Mark and Jeff came to me and asked about incorporating the A to turn the STEM into STEAM. And I was very excited about that because from my own personal background, art naturally fits in with the design process, the thinking, problem solving, and the creativity of problem solving and getting the kids to really think about all of how everything fits together. So, some of the things that we do in art class that just naturally fit in is we talk about architecture and how things are designed. We talk about the engineering and design process. And we talk really a lot about when we're creating projects, even if it's a sculpture or drawing or painting, how can we think about, like, how can we think about the planning that goes into that? And think about how that's going to lead you to creating what you need to create and how that ties in with the design process. And also, just, you know, adapting and fixing things as we go along in the process.
I get the opportunity just to share a little bit about what we're doing with STEAM in the classroom, trying to infuse it in our daily instruction, but also giving our students some extra opportunities as well. The first, we have a list of kind of some of the STEAM activities that we're currently doing at Live. The first one on the top there, this past year, we were recognized as a Subaru Loves Learning winner for our STEM program and received the donation of 150 books for our students to be able to use. I think we were one of five schools across the United States that won that award. We were nominated actually by a parent from our building who worked with Subaru, and we were able to be honored in that way. We take our students to the York County Envirethon competition every year as well. It's probably about 10 years I've been involved with that. We take students in third through fourth, and then also fifth through sixth grade. And last year, if you see a picture of our fifth and sixth grade students, we were sixth in the county out of 58 teams or so. We finished first in the current issues area out of all those teams and third in wildlife. And if I knew just a little bit more about trees, probably would have done. I did grow up in a very urban school district. And it's excuses, but we will do better. You know, in my urban school district, the trees were those things out in the park that the other people want to. We didn't have that too much in our school district, but if we knew a little bit more about trees, we could have improved on that. New this year, what we're trying to do, if you kind of heard the theme, grades four through six. That's our comfort area. That's our student body that we get to work with. But we realize, and like Dr. Weesling said, this really has been a journey, and we're just kind of getting started on it. And we see the importance of all of our students. So, this year, as we have gotten more comfortable with STEAM activities, we're including our K through three students in them as well. We're going to have monthly STEAM challenges where they're at-home STEAM activities to work on problem solving. This one that we started with in the month of October is Design Your Own Pumpkin Using Found Materials. So, every student K through six has the opportunity to do this at home, and then we're going to judge and have some prizes for that. So, it's just neat to kind of see the creativity and also get that connection, what's happening at school to home. And then, we've started STEAM buddy events where my fourth graders go down to kindergarten once a month, and we teach a STEM lesson to them based upon their curricular needs. So, the first one we did was, we all read Jack and the Beanstalk. And then, the students in kindergarten and fourth grade had a challenge using index cards and tape to build the tallest beanstalk. And so, they planned, they measured, they had the opportunity to think about, like an engineer. Jeff is taking fifth-grade students to buddy with first grade, and our sixth-grade teacher is taking second grade. And then, that leaves our third-grade students. And they are working with our librarian, Mrs. Kunkel, in the new makerspace area that we're trying to create. It's kind of their focus on how to infuse STEM into their everyday. So, we don't want it to be just something we do on the side. It's something that we want to start to become more of what we do when it comes to science instruction at Live. One of the things that we get to do as well, and I kind of skipped over it, and that's my apology. We started to take our students to challenges offered at the LIU. Last year was the first year we went to the Connects Challenge. And our, one team of students actually came in third place overall, and we were really excited about that. And we brought both, two of our students that were on those teams, Savannah Willier and Ryan Mitchell. Savannah also did Envirethon with me last year. But Ryan is going to share a few words just on his feelings about the competition and just what he thought. So, Ryan, go ahead.
I enjoy working as a team to build a roller coaster and how the cars work together.
Right, that I heard. The challenge was, you had to use Connects blocks to design an environmentally friendly amusement park ride. And so, we worked for probably three months with students over lunch after school, coming up, practicing plans, redesigning. Ryan and Steve built a roller coaster. Our other team built a pirate ship. So, Ryan, go ahead.
I learned problem solving and life skills and how to conquer the problem as a team. I thought Mr. Judy and Mr. Murphy did a good job with helping us with the design and how to work better as a team.
Thank you, Ryan. And... The other challenge that we took students to as well last year was a 24 math challenge that the LIU offered. And we are planning on going back in this year and giving those students just extra opportunities. The last kind of competition thing that we do is something that we started in our own building. It's a STEAM showdown, where, like I said, towards the end of the year, all students in grades four through six get the opportunity to come and choose an event that they want to compete in. Our first year, we did buoyancy with boats, paper airplane design, and then bridge building. Like I said, in 2016 was the Rube Goldberg machine. Last year was newspaper towers, building a balloon car and a marshmallow catapult. And then, in 2018, we're still planning the events, but this is really a highlight, I think, for our students. They really get excited about that day. We also have a math competition during the day as well that students do in their homeroom. And we usually have some kind of extra STEM-related activity. We've had robotics groups come in. We had bricks for kids come in and do something. Last year, we did an escape room concept for problem solving using a company called Breakout EDU. So, just something else fun that the students get to work on during the day. And then, what we're really excited about this year is including K through three, not so much as a competition, but more as a carnival idea where they get to pick and choose which STEM activities they would like to work on, including all of our Encore teachers in that as well. Mr. Judy, I think you're up.
Yep. So, like Mr. Murphy said, we do a lot of separate STEM things, but we do believe that STEM and STEAM in the classroom can boost achievement. So, we do a lot of competitions in the classroom, in my science classroom, Mr. Murphy's classroom, that are easily connected. It's a great platform for connecting, you know, Common Core math skills, things that are tested material, to a fun, engaging activity. So, we do a lot of those things because we want students to see the relevance of what they're learning. And that's the great thing about STEM and STEAM is, let's make it relevant, real world, and let's have fun with it. Problem solve, critical thinking, collaboration, communication, and creativity, bringing the arts into it. And we believe that, you know, preparing students for jobs, future jobs that aren't even there yet because they're changing so fast. We want our students to be not just gatherers of information, but to be creators and authors and use the information that they're given. So, Savannah is going to introduce just a quick challenge that we'll do with you guys and ladies to show you kind of what we do in the classroom, but how it's engaging and how easily we can connect it with the math skills we work on, ELA skills, the technology standards, all those things to make it relevant. So, Savannah, you want to introduce a little challenge for us real quick?
What we're going to have to do is a paper tower challenge. So, seeing as he's got... You're good.
It was a team effort. We all...
So, what you're going to have, you're going to have three minutes to basically design your paper tower only using one piece of paper and use two. You're going to have three minutes to plan and then five minutes to build and construct with your piece of paper.
So, we're thinking maybe you could use the whiteboard behind you.
Engage the audience. Everyone can see your plan and your process. So, is the design process just come up with a plan using markers, whiteboard work? Do you have paper and pencil because you can prepare? Then you can use that. But the challenge is, you're going to get one piece of paper. You're going to get a limited amount of tape. And then, we're going to see after the five-minute build, who built the tallest tower.
With one piece of paper?
One piece of paper.
Your three minutes, start now.
So, find a partner beside you. We will need a group of three.
Did she give you one? I didn't realize she gave you one.
We have to design it first.
Kind of like that, right? And that's your first one. And then, you take the cylinder. Okay? So, you take the cylinder. This one. Graphic. Count. Okay? And then, you take the...
Just one piece of paper.
With that.
I can only use one piece of paper.
So, now we got a...
I can only use one piece of paper. Yes, probably.
Don't get it.
Do I do that? There it is. All right. We take here, we do that here. Yeah. And I take cylinder.
Okay. Just enough thick enough to be able to stick it together.
I'm 6'2". I'm 6'3", but I feel my stand should...
So, I thought we had to, like, tear it. But we'll make it right. It was like, each half a piece of paper. So, it will only be like... Yes, it's just the tape.
All right, you can start to build now. Building time, five minutes. Your time is done. Your winning time now has come to an end. Part of time is now over. Part of the design process is research, and Savannah actually won this one.
Tight, tightest perspective. I've never done this with my staff.
The five-minute construction time has now begun.
Going to need, going to need a little tape. Be the tape guy. I figure we'd tape guy, even though I'm the holder.
We're fine, okay?
Have you guys taped yourselves? I'm going to use that tape on something else. No, ours is up there. What you do is, you do this.
Is it the tallest right now?
Give me a piece of tape. Oh, it is. It's the tallest. You did not define it. Give me a piece of tape. I'm trying to get a tall stand here. Is it not the tallest stadium? See, that way, you could go like, get a stand. You mean like that? So, we're going to create like a... Let me take your...
It's coming.
Yeah. We have, we can get it up there high and... Again, it's 40. Let's cut this down. Yeah, I know.
I'm not either.
That's it? If people watch Association of Social Studies, it's a school where students... That would be all.
Minute and a half remaining.
He's being very creative.
Hey, me and Morni, we were really good friends. What do we get from this? An award? Well, we're going to try. We don't know.
Maybe ask what you're doing?
We have no idea.
No idea? Yes. What, can you explain?
We have no idea. We're just doing it.
Ten, nine, eight.
Tape. Careful.
Five, four, three, two, one. Back away.
I need more, more tape.
We also have the tallest...
That is the tallest tower in the room.
That's awesome.
No, up on top.
I don't know that I would call it a tower. We were going to add...
Just, just kind of as closing for us. Yeah. Anybody want to share some of the skills that you think our students, that you got to use in this activity? Maybe a challenge or problem? What kind of skills did you get to encounter?
Yeah, deferring to somebody who knows more than I know. But collaboration.
Odd collaboration. Honestly, one of the benefits that I see with the STEAM approach is, it allows students with different strengths to be able to shine. You know, sometimes, some of our students who maybe struggle in the areas of reading or math, but you put something hands-on in front of them where they get to problem solve, they are really able to give strengths where maybe they wouldn't get to in their classroom on a daily basis.
And they feel successful, and they're excited about learning. And when they, again, when they see the connections, and it's so easy to connect ELA, science, technology, math, you know, together to do one of these projects. You could do this in any classroom, really. And that's what we're always trying to do in our classrooms, but we want to do more of it even this year. Like John Mark said, we're trying to bolster the program and make it a holistic thing for our school, for the district, really.
We know your time is valuable, and we appreciate you allowing us to come. We're going to leave you with the packets that we passed out at our, at the STEM Solutions Fair that allowed, that we were able to present at. To just kind of recap some of the history, some of the things that we talked about tonight, see some of the rubrics that we use when it comes to grading, or not grading the students, but scoring the students at the competition. And then, it also closes out with just some of the testimonials from our parents and students of what this STEAM program is meant to do at Live. And it has on, on the front as well, our Twitter account that we created this year just as a social media approach to share out with our families what's happening in terms of STEAM on a daily, a daily basis. Thank you very much.
Actually, I have a question for you. I do have a question. So, when, when you're presenting this information, are you integrating it into your normal curriculum? Or are you taking, putting this out on another, as an aside?
It's integrated in the method curriculum. So, whatever we're working on in science class, it may be something that's, working on the science method, we'll do a STEM project or activity like this that connects the method, takes it through the steps. So, it's not just reading about it.
Ben Cookham.
Or an ELA class. I know I had Anna a couple of years ago. I used to teach ELA, and so, we would read a book, and we read Island of Blue Dolphins and Hatchet. And we built marshmallow launchers, you know, like, out of found materials. Like, the characters in the book were finding, making weapons and stuff out of things to catch food with. So, that's one of the things, you know, it can be done in any class, especially connected with the curriculum. It's not, "We're doing STEM today." It's, it's what we're already doing. We're trying to have that mindset of how can we connect it with what we're already doing.
And that's a, that's a change in our approach. When we first started off, it was kind of an isolated, separate thing. But now, as we get more comfortable with STEM activities and how to integrate those skills, we find it a lot easier within our curriculum. So, it's not, "Let's do STEM, and then let's come back and do the rest of our day." So...
In social studies today, we were building, you know, foil boats that can hold the most treasure because we're learning about explorers. So, they were building boats that can hold the most treasure. And we're learning about the European explorers, but we're also building things that connect, we're measuring and weighing and... So they were building boats that can hold the most treasure and we're learning about the European explorers, but we're also building things that connect, we're, we're, uh, measuring and weighing and redesigning. So, yeah, we do it every quarter class.
Thursday, in my class, we've been studying the design process as part of our science curriculum and on Thursday, we're testing, um, prototypes that they built to keep an egg from cracking when dropped from a distance. So they've taken the steps of the, the design process and actually did it, but it wasn't something extra I had to find time to do. It's just one, a different approach to.
Yeah, it's the mindset. And that's why we're working with the, the younger grade teachers to help support them. What can we, how can we help with?
You tell us what is a topic that you guys are studying that we can help kind of break them along that path. Because we realized, just to say, go do STEM, we weren't there three years ago. We had to kind of ease into it and get some help and now we can see it, uh, within our curriculum, but it takes time.
And then, all teachers in fourth through six in, in your building are incorporating this into their, into their lessons?
With our departmentalized approach, we're responsible for science instruction, so that is the bulk value. So, uh, all the students that see us do that.
And is there a chance that we are going to expand this beyond Live Elementary School?
Well, as a matter of fact, Chuck, uh, is going to work with them specifically and expand it to the other three elementary schools. We are looking at STEM and STEAM from kindergarten up through 12th grade and, um, he has been tasked with doing that. So he's taking some competition teams and he is going to look at some other programs and he's working directly with them, uh, to, to definitely expand it.
I love the, the practical hands-on, uh, solutions to, to everything and in, in times here, I mean, I, I think that's, like you said, it gives it that authentic, that authentic word learning, so.
And that's how people learn. That's how we all.
Absolutely.
We have to see the value in it and get into it and, uh, care of it.
Thank you.
I'm super excited for this to come to the other, other elementaries because I know some of my daughter's friends, my daughter's in sixth grade and some of her friends at Live, she'd get so jealous because of the connects and, you know, that, that kind of stuff. So I'm very excited about that. Thank you guys for your hard work and dedication.
Yes, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Judy, Mrs. Storms, thank you very much. And particularly Savannah and Ryan, that was awesome. Great job, guys. Okay, next.
Hey, Mr. Wassler.
Okay, keeping the STEM focus alive. Um, and Mrs. Herman recalls last meeting, she said, I'd love to have that person who did, you know, Mr. Bond, the Maker Fair stuff, come back. Well, tonight we're bringing it back. Um, so I'm gonna keep my introduction short. So Mr. Bond has come to me with a project that has been proposed to him and he asked the opportunity, along with one of the student participants, to share that project view as long, as well as some of the pieces that go with their robotics program. So, Mr. Bond, you're on.
Hi, so, uh, I'm Mr. Bond, the high school physics teacher, and a few years ago, started an electronics class, which has then developed into this robotics class. Here's the next slide, please. So what I did is just, uh, put the four things that are happening related to robotics in the high school. Uh, the one is that, as, uh, Mr. Wassler had mentioned, we've gotten back from the World Maker Fair for the third consecutive year, where we showcased last year's students' work. It was very well received. They received praise from CEOs of companies, from marketing directors of the equipment we were actually using. One of the neat things is we were using something called a Raspberry Pi and somebody was there with a shirt that said Raspberry Pi. I said, oh, did you know about that? She said, well, yes, I'm, I came from Cambridge, England today and that's what I do. So they interviewed Toby about his project. So that was really neat. A couple more things coming about that here in the slideshow. Uh, the other thing is that we have an, um, a bi-annual robotics competition. We've had it for about a decade now. It's a rotating event that goes to different schools in the area and Dover hosts at least one of those each year. That's coming up in December. There is a robotics class in the spring, which is a regular, uh, you know, full-credit course. And the thing we came to talk about tonight is this opportunity, the Mars Rover Project, which we'll get to in just a few slides. If you go to the next slide, please. So there's the World Maker Fair summary. Uh, took three students up this year. Actually, two were alumni, one's a current student, Tobias Gobler, Truman Metz, and Jacob Becker. Uh, there were four projects that we presented. One was a game of pong that a group can play by voting with paddles and then in real time, you're controlling the board. We call it the purest form of democracy. Then we, and it is. And we had a tic-tac-toe machine. We used computer vision. Uh, that took almost the entire year to develop, but there's a camera that looks at the board, it understands the moves, it understands Xs and Os, and then an arm comes out and makes the move. So the user plays just like they were playing against a human and the computer plays and always wins, of course. Um, then we had a GPS car, round two, where we have a, a little power wheels car, power wheels car that can navigate by itself and go from a point to another point using GPS. And a laser harp where you play, touching the air, you play music. Brought those along. Uh, and then I presented up there as well on a topic called problem-based learning in the high school classroom, because there's been a lot of interest in how, how do you do this in high school, in a public high school? Uh, how do you get the funding? How do you get the materials? How do you get the ideas? So I, I spoke to a group about that. And we received a best-in-class award, which is the highest award given out at the event. Next slide. Um, here's a picture of some of the things and a little video. If you could just hit play for, and I promise for like 10 seconds, just so you can see the thing work. Uh, this is Toby in, uh, the prep room of my classroom, using the tic-tac-toe robot. So there, it makes its move. And then he'll make his O and we can probably move on after that. But he built this from scratch. I mean, it's made of wood. That's wood, you know, it's a piece of pine that we carved out and it's got some stepper motors and there's a USB camera up there on the top. It's really pretty remarkable. Okay, you can move on. It's on YouTube if you'd like to see more. The Interscholastics Robotics Competition is hosted at Dover High School. Um, this is through the Dover Robotics Club. It's actually a club that we have at the school. It's an annual event. We get anywhere from, I think the less, the least we ever had was five area schools came and we've had as many as 12. Uh, we have six events and new this year, in the past, we've always used one robotics kit to sort of keep it equal. Everybody uses the same thing. This year, it's anything. You bring anything you want. We designed the challenges and they can use, uh, the Vex robotics kit, which is popular. They can use, there's one called MakeBot, they can build it from scratch. So that's gonna add a, a new level of, of competition to the event. And that, and it's free this year. We used to charge an entry fee, we're making it free for all the schools that participate. Uh, in robotics class, that's the course that Dover offers, those are always problem-based projects, uh, that students use programming, physics. They have to source their own parts, figure out which boards they need to buy. The whole point I try and get across is there are no kits. There's no such thing as a kit in that class. And even beyond that, I try and do something that's never been done before. If we can find an example of someone having done it, that's boring to me. So we try and do something that has never been done. And as far as I know, that tic-tac-toe robot using computer vision, that's the only one in the world that does that. Kind of a neat thing to be able to tell the kid who made it. Um, and then, of course, the students, we take the best projects and enter them in the Maker Fair each year. And so far, they've all been accepted, so we're pretty proud of that. Uh, so this is the new thing. This, I got an invitation 11 days ago from the robotic, the, the rocket advisor at Spring Grove and he said, we've done rockets for a lot of years and there's this competition where you build a robot, you put it inside the rocket, blast it up to a thousand feet and then when it lands, it has to do some things. He said, we can't build the robot, will you build it for us? And I said, I said, yes. That sounds really, really awesome. Um, and so we're setting up some communication with the Spring Grove team. We'll have to collaborate with them. And I, as far as I know, I've never heard of this. I don't know exactly how this works, that we work with another school and we have to make it work, another district. So we're trying to figure out the bits and pieces of how that works, but I think we'll get there. And so the timeline is that we have to submit a preliminary design in December, a final design in February, do some qualifying launches, and then there's a competition, if we make it, in April. And, uh, Michael Guyer, I brought along, and if you can go to the next slide, he'll tell you a little bit about where we're at and what the project entails.
All right, so to introduce myself, um, my name is Michael Guyer. Um, I am in the computer science pathway at the high school. And last year, I took computer science day and I really enjoyed it and it kind of sparked my interest. And I had the project to build a flying drone that would theoretically be autonomous. Unfortunately, it didn't exactly work out, so I decided, in robotics this year, which I have next semester, um, I would try that again, but instead of focusing on the software side, I would focus on hardware and try to build my own drone. And this kind of brought this up again, because our goal is to design an autonomous rover to launch in the rocket and deploy, and then, once it's deployed, return to the ground safely. And when it lands, it has to take four pictures with the camera and transmit the images, um, over some sort of system to our personal devices. And then, um, as it lands, we have to release a marker where it lands and then it has to travel 10 feet and release a second marker and it has to turn 90 degrees and travel another 10 feet. And that has to all be done within 10 minutes of the landing. So our idea, based on reading the packet that was given to us, is that instead of having a wheeled drone that would just travel across the ground, we would try to build a flying drone. Because with the threat of one foot cornstalks in the way, it's not exactly possible to get that into a rocket that would be able to trample the cornstalks, so why not fly above them? And we have a few designs here, if you go to the next slide. We have a small block design there for just some preliminary stuff and we've been using Google Sheets to organize ourselves. There are, at this moment, four students involved. Myself, Tyler Senja, Ben Griffin, and Sean McDonald is kind of helping a little bit. And we're just trying to get a preliminary design at this point, um, so that we can continue with working with the hardware. If you go to the next slide. Um, it has not been successfully completed. These are the four best schools that have done the best. And we're trying to compete with colleges and our goal is to hopefully complete it this year. And as a high school, completing it against colleges would be an absolutely amazing feat.
And I'll finish from there and I just want to echo that. What I was so excited about when I saw this is that it's never been done. No one ever did it. And, uh, you know, Virginia Tech University? And we're, I think we're gonna, I'm, I'm almost like 90% certain we can do it. So we'll see. But, uh, the way, the way we're gonna be funding this is Spring Grove already has some grants in place for their rocket program and we, they're gonna be paying the registration fees, things like that. We're gonna be using, hopefully, district transportation from a field trip to go to these competitions, which are in Maryland, about five or six hours away. And we're gonna apply for these three grants, um, and see if we can, I think, I think, I'm very optimistic we ought to get the money we need that way. And there's two regional aerospace companies that are interested in what we're doing and they're gonna help with either financial support or with teleconferencing to bounce some ideas off of them. You go one more time? I think that's the last slide. Yeah, so thank you to the school board. Uh, in the past, I've asked for some things for robotics and they, we've always delivered and been happy to have that. I've always had great compliments and warm welcomes when we come here to present these things. And also thanks to Mr. Wassler, who's been able to help us to do some things that are sort of out of the box. Uh, whenever I come up with a new idea, I kind of go down and say, hey, I got an idea. It usually means it's something that hasn't been done before and so we have to figure out how that fits into the bits and pieces that make schools work. And he's, he's helped us with that a lot. And I, I want to leave you with this picture, because if this thing works in April, we're gonna look back and say, oh, that was amazing. But that's what it is right now. That's it. That's the whole thing. Thank you, that's all. Are there any questions for either of us?
I got a question for you, Mr. Bond. Where'd you get your inspiration? I'm just curious. Your, your inspiration for robotics and, and that sort of thing?
Oh, just personally?
Yeah.
And just growing up and playing with stuff, you know? We had a barn. Every kid should have a barn, right? There was stuff in there so you could play with it. Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you. Between that and the tower building, I think I made the right choice going into banking.
So if I could have Mr. Mayford and Mrs. Kroom join me over here. Um, one of the coolest parts of my job is getting to celebrate stuff like you just saw there. Um, Mr. Bond, I have a hard time saying no to, because he walks and says, I have an idea. He sparks my engineer inside me and then I go, how can we do it? I'm 100% sure they're gonna do it right, um, because their passion makes them do it right. Uh, but along with that, we also celebrate students who do amazing stuff every day. And I'd like to recognize two students in particular, uh, for two reasons. The first, we don't have a certificate for because it's just a posted piece of information. Uh, each of the college board recognizes students who score three or better, which is a qualifying score for college credit, on three or more AP exams. And in Dover, we're very proud that this year, we had six students achieve that feat. Um, but two of them are actually being recognized tonight as well. And they are also the only two students of those six who are not graduates. They are the only two who are still in school. So to meet that feat in your junior year is a very, very high honor. Um, and along with that, you get the PSAT every year with preliminary scholastic aptitude test. Um, it's also the National American Scholarship Qualifying Test. And last year, over 1.6 million students took that exam. And each year, the organization, National American Scholarship Corporation, recognizes the top 50,000 students for scores. So to score in the top 50,000 of 1.6 million is an amazing accomplishment. And Dover is very proud that we have two students this year who both received that honor. I promised one of them I would keep this short and sweet and not embarrass them, so I'm gonna stop now. Uh, but I'd like both of them to come up and receive their certificate, so if we can recognize Alex D. Giovanni and Emily Ewing, if you guys want to come up.
There's some of us we want to recognize tonight. And all of this can't happen without an unbelievable support of schoolwork. So every year, uh, school board members are recognized and, and you know, they give their time, they're away from their family, their big salary of nothing, uh, to serve us, uh, who work in the district and the kids who are served each year. So it is always an honor when we have school board members who stay with us and see us through year after year. So I would like to ask Mr. Emmett to come forward, please. About 12 years of service on the school board. I present this from the Pennsylvania School Board Association. Thank you so much.
You have a petty increase in the passion.
Okay, anything else, Mrs. Kroom?
No, I think that's good for now.
Next up, our student representatives.
So from Dover Elementary School, they would like to thank the high school for inviting them to participate in the homecoming parade. They said it was a great experience that the students will never forget. This Friday, October 20th, will be our Fall Festival. Each grade will get to participate in fun-filled activities sponsored by our wonderful PTO. Some of the activities include bounce houses, face painting, a football kicking contest, a photo booth, and many more exciting events. October 26th will be our first Soaring Eagles breakfast. Teachers nominated students who have shown the characteristics of our proud acronym. Students will get to enjoy treats provided by the teachers. At Live Elementary School, kindergarten teachers held a very successful K-curriculum night for parents on Wednesday, October 4th. Live PTO students and staff participated in the high school's Homecoming Spirit Week and Parade. Laps for Live is scheduled for Wednesday, October 18th. This is the main fundraising event for the Live PTO. Red Ribbon Week will be celebrated October 23rd to 27th. Each day, there will be a theme to encourage students to make healthy decisions. At North Salem Elementary School, they enjoyed participating in the Homecoming Parade this past week. The North Salem students would like to thank the entire Eisenhower family and Cedar Hill Farms for supplying their monster tractor and wagon. On October 10th, students participated in the Michaela's Voice Assembly. Students had the opportunity to ask questions and talk about differences. Everyone learned about how inclusion is important for all. The North Salem Eagle Walk will be held this Friday, October 20th. A special thank you for those who supported this event through their donations to the PTO and volunteering to make this possible. On November, or on October 27th, the Kona Ice Truck is coming and the North Salem students will receive their quarterly reward for meeting our proud expectations. The North Salem staff enjoyed the Class Act coffee beverages provided by Mrs. Oswald's class. Thanks for perking our teachers up. At Wildstown Elementary School, Michaela's Voice and Assembly brought to us from the Ark of Pennsylvania came to Wildstown on October 10th. It was a great learning opportunity for all. Wildstown staff and students enjoyed participating in the Homecoming Week festivities. The parade and spirit days were a success. Thank you for including us, DHS. Wildstown staff members enjoyed beverage deliveries from Class Act beverages. Members of Mrs. Oswald's high school class delivered made-to-order hot and cold beverages for our staff. What a special treat. Fourth grade students enjoyed a trip to Nixon Park last week and we will celebrate proud behaviors on October 27th by holding a proud assembly to recognize soaring eagles. Students that were Wildstown proud for the month will enjoy a movie and popcorn on the 27th. At Dover Area Intermediate School, intermediate students participated in the Yes, Your Economic Success Day on Tuesday, October 17th, which was presented by Junior Achievement. Volunteers from businesses around York County. Best Dover pride blended with the Disney theme was Mrs. Wood's homeroom for Beauty and the Eagle. Best Dover intermediate school pride mixed with the Disney theme was Mr. Betts and Ms. Weaver's homerooms for Aliens Takeover, DIS. Best Dover pride and self-pride was Mrs. Janoski's homeroom with Inspirational Moana. And the Flex remediation and enrichment period began. At the high school, they held their Homecoming Spirit Week last week. Congratulations to the class of 2018 who accumulated the most spirit points during the week. Congratulations also to the Homecoming Queen, Alex D. Giovanni, and Homecoming King, Michael Wolfgang. Our revamped PVI S program was launched during the pep rally on Friday. As a part of this relaunch, the Proud Pass was announced. This pass allows students who exhibit exemplary behaviors in academics to have additional building access and enrichment courses during Flex period. On October 3rd, the Counseling Department facilitated College and Career Night. Over 200 parents and students came out to hear from community members about financial aid, college admissions, and career options. Six Dover Area High School students and graduates were recognized by the college board as AP scholars. In order to be an AP scholar, a student must receive a score of three or higher on three AP exams. Congratulations to Carolyn Bradbury, Alex D. Giovanni, Emily Ewing, Joanne Azivi, Hannah Williams, and Toby Givler.
Any questions from our board members tonight?
I don't have a question, but I wanted to say, and Jared, I'm gonna need your help with this. I wanted to commend the, the homecoming. For those of you who were there, the king, the homecoming king had one, and I, I'm gonna get teary-eyed just talking about it. So Jared, if you could help me out here, please, cuz I'm, I was up there blubbering like a baby watching it.
So was mom, so was I, so was everyone. One of our students on, I guess Wednesday told his mom, he said, "I hope I win." And if you know Shad Murphy, Shad Murphy never says he wants to win anything except a football game. Because Shad might be literally the kindest soul ever created. And he kept saying Thursday, "I wanna win, I wanna win." And he went to Hanoi Friday, told his mom, "If I win, it's going on the kid who deserves to be the king of this school." So as soon as he won, he flipped over and put it on top of Michael Wolfgang. And we had a rock state innovation. And just so you know, Michael referred to it, he wrote a letter to Shad and referred to it in class on Monday as the greatest day of his life. So much so that when he delivered at North Salem for coffee on Monday, he put the crown on to go. And now, except for the fact that talk, he's informed us every time he delivers coffee, he's wearing the crown because he's now the king. So again, it was an awesome opportunity because honestly, sometimes those moments, kids do things for wrong reasons. That was 100% our kids doing the right thing for the right kid. And it was an honor to watch that happen and I think we all felt the same way as we watched it.
And to see the smile on Michael's face, I mean, the rest of that, that night, that football game was just unreal.
Anybody else? For those who don't know, this is Sarah Wilt, our student representative. So thank you very much, Sarah, for your work tonight. You're welcome to stay or you're welcome to take off. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is our first public comment period. This is a three-minute period for items on or off of tonight's agenda. If you have anything that you would like to comment on, you may please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the public record. Since nobody's moving, we'll move on to Board President's Communication. Under the announcements of executive sessions, we did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss a personnel matter that's on the agenda and to also receive an update on the Washington Township Court case and a court case involving the PSBA organization. I did also want to mention tonight that I see a bunch of scouts sitting here in our room tonight from Troop 67, I believe. So welcome. I believe you're all working on a merit badge tonight. So you picked a good night to be here. A lot of stuff going on, so welcome. Okay, I had nothing else with that. So next would be our Lincoln Benefit Trust Trustees item. So I would like at this time to entertain a motion to approve the Lincoln Benefit Trust Trustees for the 2017-18 school year as Jennifer Benko, Business Manager, Board Secretary, Christina Jacoby, Human Resources Director, Alternate Trustee, Deb O'Donnell, Teacher, Trustee, and myself as Board of Directors. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussions on this item? And the motion carries. Okay, moving on to the approval of the minutes, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 19th, 2017 Board Meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? And the motion carries. Scouts, this is the exciting part of the meeting. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 21st, 2017 Board Planning Meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? And the motion carries. Okay, we'll move on now to the approval of tonight's consent agenda. As we have done in the past, we will go through category by category to discuss any items that might be of interest or under question at this point. So first, I would like to go through the Curriculum and Professional Development category. Are there any questions regarding any of those items in that category? There are four items tonight.
Yes, I have a question. What are the Competitive Academics? Who are those students? I guess it is.
Competitive Academics is our organization that does Model UN MOP trial. So think of it as kind of those independent academic events that often operate by themselves. They form a unified team. So this field request should be for their Model UN trip within the state of Pennsylvania, which they've done the past couple of years. So that's for them to go and participate in the Model UN exercise.
Anybody else in this category? Okay, we'll move on to the one item under Facilities. Any questions related to that? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to Human and Fiscal Resources. We have 15 items to consider. There will be a separate vote under this category later, but of the 15 items, any questions or comments on any of those? Hearing none. We'll move on to Safe and Supportive Schools. We do not have any items there for tonight. So with that, I would like to entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments on this? And the motion carries. Okay, moving on to our other vote that we have tonight, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the independent agreement for temporary assistant superintendent contract with Dr. Patricia Maloney.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion related to this? I'd just like to mention that I think we have an exciting opportunity before us right now with Dr. Maloney coming to the district on a temporary basis to assist Mrs. Kroom with the transition as we search for a new assistant superintendent within the district. This will allow Mrs. Kroom some time to focus some of her efforts on that while we have somebody in place to also help focus on our curriculum development efforts. Her background is in curriculum. She comes to us from York Suburban School District, very well-respected, a lot of experience with that. So anybody else? And the motion carries. Okay. Moving on now to some of our committee reports, the Capital Improvement Steering Committee. That would be myself, Mr. DeSho, and Mrs. Kroom. Just from that standpoint, the committee continues to meet, continues to make progress. The board did have a planning session where we were provided with an update on the potential building project and where things stood with the timeline with that, and also a financial presentation and how this project would be funded. I don't know if you want to add anything, Mrs. Kroom or Mr. DeSho, to the comments?
They'll be back on Thursday to give us more information at our committee meetings.
Any questions or comments? Okay, next is the Dover Eagle Foundation. I know Mrs. Kroom is working on pulling together various representatives from all of the community-based organizations such as the Alumni Association, the foundation, to create some partnerships. I don't know if you want to expand upon that at all, too?
We are scheduled to meet, I want to say, early November and we have, everyone has committed to come. So we are also going to bring a speaker in who has had a very, very successful foundation. So he's going to talk to us about how, how they did that and just some tips and how we can move it along. We think this is a great time to pull everyone together as we move forward with capital projects and to just get everyone from the community involved. And so we're excited about working with them.
Any questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to York Adams Academy with Mr. Emmig.
Our next meeting should be next Tuesday night. That's all I have.
All right. Any questions? Okay, York County School of Technology, Mr. DeLauder.
The authority met two weeks ago, I believe it was now, to interview architects for their building projects. The architects were chosen through an invitation only. So we digged together and interviewed four. Each of those architects had 30 minutes to present just a basic overview of who they are and what they could do for the plan. And we did, at the end of the night, we then did choose one architect so that you have, and I apologize, it like went out of my head, I can't remember the name of the, of the architectural firm, but they are a small firm out of Langston County. So they are going to meet in the next couple of weeks with the administration at the, the school and start beginning their planning process for, for the, the new gym and ancillary areas. And that's all I have.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, LIU Special Education, Mrs. Kroom or Mrs. Benko?
Just an update on the IU. Mrs. Kroom and myself met with various York County business managers, some special ed representatives from the school, and another superintendent. We discussed our LIU services and evaluated, you know, what those mean and what each district has. And we started discussions on how our York County school, or York County districts can begin maybe sharing services to maybe make things a little bit more proficient and also hopefully gain some cost savings from that. So just a little beginning conversation and hopefully we can gain some efficiencies through the process.
Questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Ralhauser, what's happening in Harrisburg?
Not much, except arguing. There's an election coming up next month and on the ballot is a referendum to change the Constitution, if I understand it right. Right now, the Homestead Act is what gives us a discount on our taxes. And that is what they're planning to use so that can be increased, so the property taxes can be reduced. That's how I understand it, but I could be wrong, but that's what I took from what the information I got.
Can I add to that then? So the property taxes will, the property tax reduction, the Homestead farm said, can only be reduced by the amount of funding that we get from the state. Just because the, the vote is up doesn't mean that our taxes are gonna decrease. No additional state funding has been set aside to fully fund a Homestead-Farmstead deduction from the taxes. So just because it's there on the vote doesn't mean that the taxes are going to decrease.
Well, I think, as I understand it, too, it just gives the legislature the power to adjust that. It doesn't automatically adjust anything.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, Mrs. Brenton, PSBA.
Well, Mr. Eifert and I are gearing up for the big convention next week. And other than that, they're just basically also waiting to hear what happens on the Hill.
This week, correct? Friday?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I thought you meant what's happening on the Hill. Yes, our convention is Friday.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Dover Industrial Development Committee, Mrs. Herman.
Okay, there's still a lot of conversation about possibly having a Chamber of Commerce in Dover and that will open a lot of doors for us. And that's basically it, next meeting, next Wednesday.
Questions or comments for Mrs. Herman? Okay, next is Mrs. Kroom with the Superintendent's Report.
The administrators had their second two-hour training last Thursday with the LIU technology trainers. These are the same people who were here with the board on the board retreat night. And it was great training. We are now really looking at how do we take the curriculum and use our iPads and how do we instruct with them? How do we assess with them? How do we look at the standards and really decide which app or which technology piece is best to fit? So we're real excited about that. We have one more training in November, then teacher leaders get trained in January, and then we train everyone next year. So we're very excited because it is going to move our iPad juice forward. On that same theme, tomorrow, myself and a number of administrators are visiting Elizabeth Forward School District. They are well-known for their iPad one-to-one initiative, so we're anxious to see that in, you know, in person. But they also have a very strong STEM program. So again, we're, we're really excited to kind of see how another district does it. I want to thank you for approving Nick Endlich's trip. He, he has a conference request for the Pennsylvania Association of Elementary Health PE Teachers. He has been named the Teacher of the Year. And that's very exciting. We are very proud of him. That is, it's quite an honor. So we do appreciate that you did approve that. As we said before, on November 1st is our meeting with the Dover, the Dover Eagle Foundation, Dollars for Scholars, and the Dollars for Scholars, and the Alumni Association. Representatives from each are coming, so we will be excited to report that out. A reminder, student conferences start very shortly, and we are really beefed up parent conferences to bring as many parents in this year, and we intend to have that keep growing. Thursday night is our committee, as a reminder of that. And at the Education Committee, I will be presenting the tentative data presentation. This Friday, our PVAS growth scores come out. That's a big deal, it's what kicks off school performance profiles. So for November, we will have a full-out data presentation of all of our data. So, and again, I want to thank you for indulging us for the first hour of the board meeting with our kids and our administrators. We're so proud of what they're doing, and we're so pleased to share with you what they're doing. We have such great kids, and they're doing such wonderful things, so thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Kroom?
A question regarding the iPad use. With the training that is now taking place with that, I know when we initiated that one-to-one, it just kind of got the sense that maybe, you know, the cart got before the horse, perhaps. And maybe, you know, now we're starting to utilize the tools, or at least moving in that direction. You know, as far as the kids and their use of the iPads, I'm sure there's a number of them that use them as potential distractions versus using them as a tool. And I was just curious, you know, what is the feedback right now with the use of the iPads a few years in versus what the potential is? Are we like still at the ground floor here?
I wouldn't, anyone can jump in with this, but I would say I think we are still at the ground floor with this. Now, the positive side of it is, is now that they're out, and kids have them, and we have a lot of policies in place, we can really look at how we can use them. We can also teach, have the teachers do, all of this hands-on, all of that today. So we can do a lot of professional development along those lines as well with the iPads. It allows the teachers to do so much more with the iPads, but I would agree. I think we are getting teams of teachers in every building trained in January. And my experience has been, is when you start with your teachers, a group of core teachers who love it and want to use it, just like these teachers we saw today, with them training each other, it just takes off. So my guess is, once we are organized and we've trained this group of teachers, and then we're training the entire staff in August, I have a feeling next year we're going to see amazing things. The other thing that goes along with that is monitoring. As administration, we have to be in, we have to be monitoring teachers. We also have to give teachers expectations. How do we expect them to use it? So this is a real building year, but I think next year it's just going to be, they're shaking their heads. I think next year, would you not agree, we're just gonna, it's going to just take off. And you know what? Sometimes it just takes people to be comfortable with something, and they are, it's not brand-new for them. So I think we're just going to do amazing things with it next year. But I agree with you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Kroom or comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our miscellaneous category for any other comments or observations from our board members tonight.
Yes, I have a couple. Do we have a definite offer for the Crawls Towns School?
I have not yet received an agreement of sale. We do have some serious interest, though.
Okay. I was worried about we should lower the price.
I would not do that at this time.
Okay. So then you feel positive?
I am positive about it. I can't guarantee anything, but we do have a serious inquiry, and this person has toured the building several times. Mr. Nelson took them up, we allowed him to have some other people in to look at the building and its structures. I don't know, Dave, if you want to elaborate?
I'm not coming out. But actually, today, I had an email, went back and forth with this gentleman. This is probably the fifth or sixth time we've been talking to him, that personally, or sharing more back and forth with questions. What I know is pretty much what Jen does, is she comes saying the email, I said that we should see something within, hopefully, the next week or so.
So at the moment, things look positive?
It looks very positive.
That's good. Nora Reginald, when do we have to renew that contract?
I would have to pull it and look at the year on it.
That'd probably come up next month.
I need to pull it, yeah. I'll take a look into it.
From what we had the years past, it's probably two years coming up.
I'll pull the contract and look.
And the other comment is, with all this positive things here tonight, it would be nice if our PR man would get some information in the York Daily Record, because you don't see anything in the York Daily Record from Dover.
He's right.
Mr. Rahhauser, meet Junior Gonzalez, reporter from the York Dispatch.
That's it.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Speaking of newspaper articles, and I'm not sure, you might have wrote this article, but I was intrigued by the article about the use of the lockers at the high school, or the lack of use of the lockers. I mean, those folks that I work with, for example, are kind of shocked by that, because the old way of dragging the books to the lockers and the coats, and now looking at a building project, potential of not even needing lockers is kind of wild, you know?
I will assure you that at every meeting we have, what do I say, Jared?
At least 100.
Jared? That is not what I say. That is not what I say. Every time we're with Crabtree, you can assure me that there is room. Should anything happen, that we decide down the road that we need lockers, that there is room, and there is. So, but at this time, how many lockers are used, 50?
Well, we only had, we offered it to students for the first time, just sign up if you want one, rather than here's your key and hold it. And we only had 52 out of 1,036 students requesting, and all of them were ninth graders, and we've checked, they're not being used, they just thought they had to have them. I will say, as a direct result of the fact, we spent a year on PD about our technology last year, and we are seeing a lot more use of the iPad as a learning tool, so the textbooks are pulled back, the notebooks are pulled back, they're starting to use the iPad the way it was intended. So we're seeing a lot less use from our kids. They don't feel the need to carry four books. We used to carry four to eight books under our arm. They don't have that anymore. The book bags still weigh 80 pounds. I don't know what's in them, but they still weigh 80 pounds. But we just aren't seeing that use anymore.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our last public comment period of the evening. This is a two-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. Again, if you have anything you'd like to comment on, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Tanner Wallace.
Your address?
506 Oakwood Drive.
I'm sorry, could you?
506 Oakwood Drive.
I'm sorry, what is your name?
Tanner Wallace.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
I'm here for our Eagles Scout project, for like a kind of like follow-up. We, I don't really know how to say it.
You want to give the status of where you're at with the project. So from what we have overheard, and we wanted to be, because the scouts were coming tonight, we wanted to come in and give an update on his project. If you remember, guessing that was probably in the spring, he presented the project to revamp the drumline room at the high school. And if I overheard correctly, there were some school board members that were curious of the status of his project, which rightfully so. So we had asked to come and give an update on that. So if you could share where we're at, and what has happened, and why we're late.
So we have enough money, we have about like $900 for the plywood to build the cabinets, and we asked Beechers...
Beecher and Myers.
Beechers Myers to help if they would cut out the wood or help donate the wood. And they said that they would help, and we just needed to tell them what we want help with. And so we asked for them to cut out the wood and that we would pay for the plywood. And so we contacted them like three times, and they couldn't get to us or anything. So now we're just go buy the plywood from Lowe's ourselves, and then cut them out ourselves then.
So we'll be moving forward with the project in the next couple of weeks. So based on some information that we were given, we were not able to receive the help and getting information back. So it just didn't seem to make a fit, and we stopped contacting them and communicating with them. So that's where we're at. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Tanner. And Dave. Anybody else for public comment tonight? Okay, with that, we'll move on to our future meeting announcements. This Thursday, at 6:00 PM, we will have our board committee meetings here in the administration complex. And at 7:00, we will have our board planning meeting. And then in November, we do have things pushed up because of the Thanksgiving holiday. So our board action meeting will be on Tuesday, November 14th, at 7:00 PM again here. With that, if there's nothing else for tonight, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you for coming, everybody.